All right, good evening and welcome. In compliance with Chapter 551, Open Meetings of the Texas Government Code, I call to order a regular voting meeting of the Board of Trustees of the Austin Independent School District for Thursday, December 19, 2024, at 6:02 PM. A quorum of the board is physically present at the AISD Central Office to conduct this meeting. This meeting is streaming live on AISD TV and Apple TV. It's also being broadcast on Cable Channel 22 through Spectrum, it's down broadband and on Channel 99 through AT&amp;T U-verse. Closed captioning in English is available on these platforms for individuals who are deaf or hard of hearing. So, welcome and thank you for joining us. Our first item is under the President's Report. You know, as we approach the holiday season, we want to just take a moment to express our gratitude for all the hard work, dedication and support that has been shown by students, teachers, staff and families throughout the school year. We hope that this holiday break provides you all with an opportunity, a much-needed opportunity, I'm sure, to relax and spend time with your family, community and friends. The district offices will be closed starting December 23, 2024. So, we welcome, we look forward to welcoming staff back for professional learning on Monday, January 6th, while we prepare to welcome our students back the next day to continue the school year. So, I want to thank you all for being a vital part of our school community and happy holidays to everyone. And I wanted to ask Vice President Foster if he wanted to kick us off and maybe share some reflections. I wanted to give an opportunity for trustees, if they wanted to, totally optional, to just share some reflections on 2024 and you each have maybe about, no more than a minute. Okay, Kevin? But you get longer because you're starting us off.
I don't need longer, no, no. Everybody, my gift is to not be long. You asked before the meeting about something, an aspect of, you know, sort of what's been going well or a big moment, a big moment. And there's been tons, there's been so many, but the one thing I want to lift up is kind of wonky, but it's something that's also invisible, so worth lifting up in gratitude. And that is our attempt in our ongoing work, this sounds so nerdy, I'm so sorry, but to really and thoroughly infuse equity into every decision that we make. And so, meeting after meeting, sort of when we're being briefed on things or when we're talking about how to think about teacher compensation or how to think about what's going on on the campus, or even how to think about the ways in which our kids are experiencing joy, there is real thoughtfulness and strong emerging expertise and deep understanding around the notion of equity and how to infuse it, even in the context of when it gets really difficult and tough. The commitment of the board, the commitment of the administration, the commitment of the principals, it's just threat, the teachers, the families and kids. It is becoming what we all talked about for literally for years and years and years, to have equity not as an add-on, but equity is central to who we are. So, that's not the typical joyous thing, but it is something that has brought peace to my heart in moments of great challenge. So, there's mine.
Well said, thank you. Would anyone else like to share?
Secretary Boswell. I really want to share gratitude about the way our community is showing up to things after a real hiatus, I think, during COVID and a lot of our systems were broken. I remember going to a PTA meeting right after we were all back in buildings together at the beginning of the year and they were starting to get volunteers for our carnival and someone, a new parent raised their hand and said, "What's a carnival and why do we do that?" And I think all these ways that we come together as advocates to get information together, to share opinions, whether it's public comment or, you know, coming to the budget meeting on Saturday or volunteering, or just so many powerful ways that our community is showing up to come together and support our schools, that the schools are all the people who work in our schools, all the people who attend our schools, all the people who work in this building, you know, each of us, but so much more than that. And I really feel like that is back with joy and strength, whether it's people going to performances or games or all of it. And I, it's really, I think that is one of our superpowers as a community and I'm really glad to see it really back in the way we know we can be.
Thank you, Secretary Boswell. Anyone else like to share anything? Yes, Trustee Lugo.
Yeah, I'd like to share gratitude for all of our Essentials Areas teachers. Today, I was reminded just how important our people are, the folks that work in our schools or supporting our schools, or bus drivers. But in this particular instance, it was an Essential Areas teacher, it was a music teacher, and you could see the passion and the love that this teacher has, not just for her particular area, which happens to be music, right? But a real love for people and students and a deep demonstrated belief that if you encourage, empower and you're patient with people as they grow and learn, they can do amazing things. And she, with other support from the campus, brought together 150 kindergarteners and first graders to sing several songs, including two in other languages that don't get taught at their school. And so, I'm really grateful for every single person out there, whether it's at HQ, at our, at our bus stations and obviously at our campuses, who do this work out of love. And I know that this board and administration also understands that just because people do the work because they love it, doesn't mean they should do it for free. And we've got a really great, in my opinion, a really great approach and strategic vision for how we support our people. So, thank you all so much.
Thank you. Does anyone else like to share? All right. I just want to say thank you to our Superintendent Metias for still being our superintendent, I'll be honest. This is like the first, the first holiday season, we have not, I have not had to worry about who our superintendent's going to be when I come back. So, and you have done an amazing job and I'm just so appreciative to you and your leadership and just bringing out the best in all of our staff and therefore for our students. So, I'm feeling really confident about seeing changes in student outcomes in the coming months and years. And a lot of it has to do with you delivering on your promise to bring systems that would bring equitable opportunities for excellence, to borrow Trustee Foster's phrase. And I appreciate it and I think I speak on behalf of the whole board when I say thank you for sticking around and doing a great job.
Thank you, I appreciate that.
All right. Well, we will move on then. So, our next item is committee reports. We have posted the written committee reports as an attachment to this item on our Board Doc's Agenda. This includes a committee report on the Austin Ed Fund, the School Safety and Security Committee and Advocacy Advisory Committee. All right, next item is the Superintendent's Report.
All right, well, thank you, President Singh. I'd like to start by highlighting some student accolades from this past month. Josh will be pulling up a little slide deck here in just a moment.
Well, to kick it off, we want to celebrate Odom Elementary School Teacher Krista Accardi and her amazing students Madison, Ben, Chuka, Kayden and Ivan. They received a $751 ECO-Rise ECO Audit Grant for their project, Succulent Wall and Zeroscaping. Their goal, to improve the campus with plants that beautify the space and purify the air. These students measured and mapped out the space, created blueprints and calculated the area using math formulas. Congratulations to Ms. Accardi and her students for their creativity, hard work and commitment to making their campus greener and more welcoming. I love that blueprint there. That's like, how cute is that? That's awesome. It's like, yeah, and it's, the ratios are like, they makes, it makes sense, I love it. The Aikens Correctional Service internship students gave back to the community by volunteering with the Travis County Sheriff's Brown Santa Program to help bring joy to families this holiday season by collecting gifts, wrapping presents and organizing donations for families in need. A big thank you to the Aikens CSI students for their generosity and hard work, making a real difference this holiday season. Next, let's congratulate these three students for winning the Trail of Lights Foundation and HEB Holiday Essay and Illustration Contest. The topic this year was, "How Do You Like to Spread Joy Over the Holiday Season?" First place went to Oak Hill Elementary School 5th Grader Shashwat Venkut Eswar for his essay titled, "Joy Defined." The runners-up were Bear Creek Elementary School 5th Grade Student Aubrey Freeman for her essay, "The Jolly Season," and Walnut Creek Elementary School 5th Grader Student Chauvan Misery for her essay, "Ramadan Story." Congratulations to these talented students for sharing their creative and inspiring inspiration with us and how they spread joy during the holidays. The first esports tournament of the 24-25 school year was a huge success. Hosted at LBJ Early College High School with support from Austin ISD Primetime After-School Program and the CTE Department, the event brought together over 80 students from five campuses, including Dobie Middle School, Garcia Young Men's Leadership Academy and LBJ Navarro and Aikens Early College High Schools. A big shout-out to all the players and organizers for making this event a great kickoff to the esports season. Now, congratulations to Jacob Kozak from Bowie High School for his impressive performance at a recent welding competition. Jacob, who is part of the Clifton Career Program, placed six out of 50 welders, an outstanding achievement. You can see him right there, absolutely incredible. Another incredible middle school dance spectacular is in the books. You can see it right there at the Performing Arts Center. A huge congratulations to the 308 talented dancers who performed and wowed the crowd. Your hard work, dedication and passion for dance truly shined on stage. Well done. Next, congratulations to the Bowie Girls Volleyball Team for an incredible academic achievement. The entire team earned Academic All-District Honors and three standout players earned Academic All-State Recognition, Simone Baskin, Abriana Ubaili and Lyndon Pennings. A huge shout-out to these student athletes for their hard work and excellent, excellence both in the classroom and on the court. Next, congratulations to Nicholas Lebo. Many of y'all know Coach Lebo. Business teacher at Austin High School for being named the 2025 National Teacher of the Year by the Association for Career and Technical Education. This prestigious award honors exceptional educators who demonstrate innovation in the classroom, commitment to their students and dedication to improving CTE programs in their schools and communities. He has been teaching and coaching at our district for 14 years and is on track to become Austin ISD's first CTE National Board Certified Teacher. That's incredible. Congratulations, Coach Lebo, on this incredible achievement. You are inspiring students and educators across the nation. And finally, this one's gonna, it's gonna be hard for me to get through this one. Finally, congratulations to Norma Garza Matanek, who was honored with the Yellow Rose of Texas Award, the highest honor given to a Texas woman for outstanding community service. She was recognized with this prestigious award for her exceptional leadership for programs like Maestro en Casa, which will carry a lasting impact for the over 1,000 parents who have successfully completed the program. Congratulations, Norma, this is a well-deserved honor. Like, Norma's here. She is, when you talk about someone who believes in the power of community to support a school system and our students, there's no one who represents that better than Norma. I've known her for many years, she's an incredible individual and I've seen her at work when no one's watching and it's quite impressive. Thank you, Norma, you do an incredible job. And so, next, as we close out the semester, I want to wish our Austin ISD students and families a joyful and restful holiday season. I would like also to take this opportunity to thank our Austin ISD staff and the members of the board for their work and commitment to our students and community. I hope you enjoy your well-deserved winter break and we look forward to seeing you on Monday, January 6th. And this concludes my presentation for today. Thank you, President Singh and Board of Trustees.
Thank you, Superintendent, and I just want to echo the accolades for Norma Garza. She is a real gem in our district. All right, so the next item is the Notice of Intruder Detection Audit. And so, Mr. Segura.
Yes, thank you, President Singh. Tonight, we have Dr. Jacob Reach, Chief Officer of Governmental Relations and Board Services, to share the update with the board.
Thank you, Board of Trustees. So, TEA has conducted 27 Intruder Detection Audits in the month of November and December. At least seven of those schools failed to meet at least one standard during the audit and that will require corrective action to be completed within 60 days of the audit. All of our audits are uploaded in the executive section of this Agenda item. As of December 2024, AISD has had a total of 52 campuses audited, which is about 47%. TEA is required to audit 75% of every district within the school year, so we will still have some additional audits to go. Last school year, as a reminder, TEA ended up auditing 100% of our campuses. So, that will end my report.
Thank you so much. Trustees, do you have any questions regarding that? All right. Superintendent, would you introduce the next item?
Yes, I'd like to welcome up Katrina Montgomery, Interim Chief Financial Officer, who will join me tonight and share the budget update.
Hello and thank you for having me here today. President Singh and Superintendent Segura. So, first, we're going to start off, we're going to be doing some review of the things we've talked about previously. The first couple of slides are going to be review, but the board guardrails, we've talked about this multiple times, but the guardrails that we're giving to us were to ensure cuts in any area are equity-driven, consider the long-term impact of cuts and reductions, ensure that teachers' voices have been heard in the decision, center literacy, align to student outcomes and listen to the people impacted before cuts are final. So, these are things that we always take into consideration when we're discussing items for exploration or any strategies or budget reductions. So, we're going to continuously talk about this slide. This is the $92 million Cascade Implementation Timeline. And on this timeline, it's 24-25, it has the $26 million, which we have the strategies to cover that, we're very proud of that. But we also have the Texas Legislative Session, the 89th Legislative Session in January. And then, 25-26, we have the $47 million that we're currently, we're going to talk a little bit more about today. And 26-27, the $19 million, which is the third year, which has been the 90th Texas Legislation Slide. Anything to the left of the dark bold line are strategies that we have. We have strategies that we feel can accomplish the savings that we need here. And then, anything to the right of the dark bold line would be pending strategies and those are strategies that we're still coming up with. So, this is a slide, we were trying to, we wanted to make it pretty nice, that we're pretty happy that 24-25, we have strategies that accomplish the $26 million. And we're going to go into those strategies on the next few slides. So, we've told you before that we have strategies and we know how, develop strategies of how we want to get to the $26 million and now we're going to start laying out some of these dollar amounts. And at the bottom of the slide, you're going to see a progress to go, like you can see how we're getting there. So, finance, additional interest earnings, we have what we budgeted for, but we think we're going to exceed those and so that's an additional $5 million. The next slide is operations and facilities. Transportation and Service Center have given us reduction, so that's $3.8 million. And then, there's utilities that we're going to supplant with federal funds, which is $4.5 million. So, that gets to $8.9 million and then you can see our progress to go, goes over a little bit better and it's green. So, it shows that we're making progress. To the far right, you see the $26 million goal. Talent Strategy is going to have a division reorganization. Some of their funds are going to come this year, but the majority of her funds are going to come next year. And then, insurance funding, which we've talked about, is holding back funding for our self-insured plan for $9 million. We think we have strategies to do more, but we want to be very conservative. So, the total from Talent Strategy is $9.1 million and the progress to go really jumps up. The green line really moves forward. And then, we have teaching, learning and leading, revenue for attendance initiative. We've talked about that, the attendance is going up. Our campuses are really doing a good job at making sure they're increasing attendance. The estimate is if we increase over 1%, that's $4.5 million, but the majority of that money will go back to campuses. So, the $2 million that you see here will stay in the central budget, but the rest of the funds will go back to campuses. Contract deficiencies, we've talked about a lot of that. We're not ready to put a number there, but we do know that we're going to reduce contracts in teaching, learning and leading. And then, we have other reductions and adjustments for $1 million. We're going to work with the teaching, learning and leading team. If it's not through contracts or attendance initiative, then how else can we have reductions to their budget? So, the total for that is $3 million. And then, you see on this slide, all of these, all of the reductions that we just talked about get us to our goal of $26 million, but we still have other goals. Technology has a reclass staff from general fund to bond, which is a total of $3.4 million. And then, Project Lighthouse, we're still, technology is still working to see what that number would be. So, we have 2.3, we have TBD there for the total of $3.4 million. So, you can see now, the little, the dot for the green has, we've surpassed our goal. District-wide additional vacancy, we've planned for vacancy savings, but we think we're going to supersede that by an additional $5 million. So, the total goal is $34.4 million of what we currently have strategies for. We also want to make sure that we're very, very clear that this doesn't mean that we stop. We continue to work to figure out ways that we can have additional reductions for this year, as well as 25-26, which we'll talk about on the next slide. So, 25-26, we're going to give a budget update. And if you look to the far left, we have our priority focus. This hasn't changed from what you've seen, you saw last week, but these are the big six areas, the hybrid work schedule, transportation reconfigured, master schedule efficiency improvements, PMS reform, portable reductions and special education or TLL contracts. So, what we're taught, what Superintendent has said and what we've talked a lot about here is we want to really make sure we do the best we can in having savings in this area, because then that'll stop us from having to go so much to the other side. But some of the subsequent focus areas that we've looked at is property monetization efforts, contract evaluations, we've talked about between TLL and technology, the Graduation Preparatory Academy and Supplemental Program Review, campus staffing versus campus staffing leveling. This is something that Chief Hozak does now, but we're going to continuously look at that and evaluate stipends. So, what we've done last year, there was $30 million worth of cuts. This year, we're at $26 million. Then, we have what we feel we're pretty comfortable with saying with 20 million. And then, after all of these other things, we just want to make sure that we notify the board that after all of these things, the next strategy would be direct impact to campuses. But we, it's down here at the bottom, it's purposeful because we wanted to make sure that we were clear, we were going to do everything that we could before we impacted campuses. But we also wanted to address that.
Yeah, if you don't mind, I'd like to just add one point and if you go back, the main thing that this slide is trying to communicate is that the more efficient we can become on the items listed on the left, the higher probability we have of exceeding the 20 million. If we're less aggressive, then we're less likely to meet the 20 million, which means that more of the things on the right will come into play. And so, as we move forward and we explore the master schedule efficiency improvement, PMS reform and all of these things, we're going to be looking at kind of the tolerance of change. And, you know, if we change too little, then the reduction in cost won't be that great. If we change a lot, the disruption may be significant, but the savings may also be as well. So, a lot of the work that we're going to be doing as administration, providing updates to the board and updates to our community are going to be kind of in that balance between, between those dynamics, if that makes any sense. But just wanted to kind of make that point here as we move forward. Thank you for that.
So, the next slides, the next six slides are going to be slides that we've kind of refined since last week. The master schedules and efficiency improvement, we've gone in and met as a leadership team and that you can see, we've kind of, we're starting to build it out a little bit more. Week over week, we want you to see progress. So, our steering committee has been beefed up, so has our task force. We've changed some implementation timelines, as well as we're going to continuously identify milestones. So, this is a work in progress, but this is the, this is the foundation of the work and we're going to continuously improve upon it and add notes and update the, update the board. Same thing with PMS reform. You're going to see the steering committee has, we've kind of added more to the steering committee, the task force and then a technical advisor, TBD. The other thing that I want to point out is when you look at these slides, you'll see mostly someone's name in bold and that's usually going to be the chief who's leading the work. So, of course, all of our, all of our chiefs, we're going to wrap around and support, but this is going to be the chief who is leading the work. Portable reduction, steering committee, this one pretty much stayed the same. Chief Steenport has this, she has a plan of how we can reduce portables and she's just going to continuously evolve on that. The timeline has kind of changed, the implementation timeline, but there are definitely identified milestones that we've changed week over week. And then, we have reconfiguration of transportation routes. The goals on any of, on these have not changed, but the committees have changed and some of the milestones have been improved and given more detail. And then, contracts. Contracts is going to be reviewing TLL, which is especially going to be special education as well as technology. So, we're going to start doing a scorecard where the vendor can score themselves, as well as the staff can score the vendor, so we can make sure we're achieving the outcomes that we want to achieve. And then, the hybrid work policy. Chief Hozak and others have been working on the hybrid work policy. The plan went out earlier this week. I've been getting my staff who have signed the document saying that they attest to the information that, the rules that have been set out. So, the hybrid work policy is well on its way. So, in recap for FY 25-26, these are the things we've said we kind of wanted to look at and you see checkmarks by the ones we've done. One, leadership met to confirm timeline and verify milestones. Two, leadership shared timelines and milestones with the board. Three, we want to schedule initial committee, steering committee meetings. The plan is to start those in January. And then, we also want to review subsequent focus items. So, we want, we're focusing right now on the top six, but we also want to make sure we're looking at some of the subsequent focus items. The reason we want to do that is because we know we want to always be ready. If we don't make the 20 million, we want to have something else that is ready to go. We don't want to focus only on the first, the primary focus and then when we, if we don't make it to the 20 million, we want to make sure we're consistently moving all the work forward. And so, engagement opportunities, we've checked a lot of boxes since we last met. When we met last Thursday, we had our board work session and then we had on Saturday a committee, it was community, teacher, staff on the call. I believe there were 70-plus people in attendance. It was, it was a very good committee meeting. There were a lot of people with a lot of good questions and again, this one went over an hour. So, like, we're getting people who are involved and who are asking questions. And then, on Wednesday, we had a central office staff budget update and the communications team gave, where they would have watch parties. So, online, we know that we had 100 people, but we're thinking there were probably, probably about 150 people that got to hear the presentation that was given by our ED Adriana Cedillo. On Tuesday, January 21st, we have a Teachers and Elementary Executive Director Focus Group. And then, these are the ones we've shown before, right? And so, what we wanted to do is we wanted to start talking about letting you know we're planning going forward. So, here's some tentative dates that we're working with our communications team. So, Saturday, February 26th, 22nd, we believe we've hit a sweet spot at 11 o'clock on Saturday. I wouldn't have never thought that, but that's when we get a lot of the turnout. So, these meetings will be on Saturday at 11 o'clock. And then, there's a financial showcase that we're partnering with our communications team to have in March. So, there'll be a meeting in February, March, April and May. So, we're going to make sure we're always out, reaching to the community. The one that, the items that are not on this engagement slide is what we're going to do with the ad hoc committee and we're going to do bimonthly meetings. So, we did one in December, the next one will be February and then April. So, we're going to also make sure we're continuing our presence. So we're going to also make sure we're continuing our presence. And that is the slideshow for today, so I'm here to answer any questions.
And before we answer any questions, I do want to make a point that on one of the slides, where previously we had not identified a consulting partner in the special education contracts, we had identified now Dr. Stetson, who is familiar to the district. And so that was a substantial change. It was always part of the plan to bring someone in, but I wanted to make that clear that that was something that was noticeably different.
Thank you, Ms. Montgomery. Trustees, do you all have any questions? Okay, thank you. Oh, I'm sorry. I'll submit some questions by writing, but I would love for this to be added to board docs, please, because we didn't get the presentation, so our communities can see it. Thank you. Okay. All right, next is public testimony, but we... Oh, actually, we do not have anyone who signed up to speak in person or who left a recorded message, so we will move on to the consent agenda. So the administration has asked to pull agenda item 11.2, termination of professional employees during non-certified contract, and will bring back as an amended item in January. So trustees, are there any consent items anyone would like to pull for a separate vote? Trustee Kaufman, did you have a question? Okay. Okay, I'm happy to answer that if you did. But, okay, so does anybody want to remove any items off the consent agenda for separate vote? Nope. Okay. So Secretary Boswell, do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Yes, I move to approve items 7.1 through 7.3, 8.1 through 8.6, 9.1 through 9.5, 10.1 through 10.5, 11.1, 11.3, and 11.4, 12.1.
Thank you. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Okay, thank you. So having a motion by Secretary Boswell and a second by Trustee Quintana to approve consent agenda items, 7.1 through 7.3, 8.1 through 8.6, 9.1 through 9.5, 10.1 through 10.5, 11.1, and 11.3, and 11.4, and 11... 12.1. Is there any discussion? Yeah.
Excuse me. Regarding 11.4, excuse me, pursuing sanctions against educators who have abandoned their contract, that goes before ESPEC. Is there a time limit? Like, when we pursue sanctions against someone, when or if, can they ever come back in?
Good evening, trustees. Trustee Hunter, it is a one-year sanction, so from the date of that sanction.
Perfect, thank you so much.
Any other questions or discussions?
I have a comment.
Yes.
Thank you, President Singh. I have spoken with many members in my... In my community and district about our third future contract. And while many people I have spoken with have expressed a desire for a different situation or outcome, I believe at this time, it is the best option that we have. However, I do want to be very clear that I remain committed to our students and families in Dove Springs, and I believe in having a thriving, comprehensive middle school in Dove Springs, and I will work to achieve that. Thank you.
Thank you, and I'll just kind of add on to that and just appreciate your hitting the round running and making sure that our Mendez community stays in the loop, and I share your commitment to just ensuring that that community continues to be a priority for this board. So any other discussion? Yes?
I know, I appreciate the comments about Mendez, so thank you for that. I am curious... I'm curious about why the consent on Talent Strategy with the proposed terminations and the sanctions, why... I feel like typically, we will have an opportunity in closed session to ask questions of clarification around some of those situations. So I was a little surprised that it's included on the blanket consent agenda. I just would... I'm not asking to remove it yet. I'm just curious what the rationale, or if I'm misunderstanding what we normally do.
No, I don't think it's... Oh, well, 11.2 is not going to be heard, but the other ones you were curious about, correct?
Yeah.
Okay, yeah, I... I'm not sure. We can. I'm happy for us to discuss it in executive session before we come out and vote on it, if that's something...
Yeah, I would... Yeah, I do move that we go ahead and remove 11.1, 11.2, and 11.4 from the consent agenda, pending a closed-door discussion to clarify any of the situations.
That's fine, you have a live motion, so you could move to amend the motion.
Okay, so we'll move to amend a motion on what we're voting on for consent, correct? And can I also add to that motion that 11.1, 11.3, and 11.4 will vote on after we talk about it in exec or pull that for separate vote?
Sure. So the motion would be to approve consent agenda items...
Okay, everything except for those three.
With the... You've got that live motion, so the motion is to amend that to exclude those three.
Okay, so that would be Trustee Kaufman's motion, and he would need a second for that. Okay, with... So we have a motion to approve the consent agenda, except for items 1.1, 1.3, 1.4.
Second.
Okay. So motion by Trustee Kaufman, second by Trustee Hunter. Any discussion? All those in favor, raise your right hand. The motion passes unanimously. Okay, so at this time, Secretary Boswell, do I have a motion to approve the extension items?
You need to first go back to the original motion.
Oh, yes, okay, sorry. Okay, so now, the original motion is to approve the consent agenda. Items eight... Let's start. 8.1... No, I'm sorry, 7.1 through 7.3, 8.1 through 8.6, 9.1 through 9.5, 10.3 through 10.5, and 12.1. And so that was by... That was by Trustee Boswell, right? Okay, and second by Trustee Quintana. Any discussion? Okay, all those in favor, raise your right hand. The motion passes unanimously. Thank you so much. Okay, now we will move on to the abstention items for separate vote. So Secretary Boswell, do we have a motion?
And I just want to clarify, that included 12.1, correct?
It did.
Okay, just wanted to... Yeah, don't remember hearing you say that. I'm sure you did, so just wanted to be clear. Thank you.
Okay.
Yes, I move that we approve item 13.1, approval of an interlocal agreement with the University of Texas at Austin for a Work-Study Employment Agency Partner Agreement for the Austin ISD Avid Program.
Thank you. Is there a second?
A second.
Okay, trustees, any discussion on this item? All right, having a motion by Secretary Boswell and a second by Trustee Quintana to support item... To approve item 13.1, all those in favor, please raise your right hand. Okay, those opposed? And those abstaining? Okay, the motion passes with seven in favor and two abstaining. All right, so we will now recess the open meeting at 6:41 PM and move to executive session pursuant to Texas Government Code Sections 551.074, 551.072, 551.073, 551.087, 551.076, 551.0821, and 551.071. When we are finished with the executive session, we will briefly return to vote on the items... To possibly vote on the items that were pooled. Those were 11.1 through 11.1, 11.3, and 11.4. And at that time, we'll also formally adjourn the meeting. So the adjournment will be recorded and be included in all replays of tonight's meeting, so thank you so much for joining us, and happy holidays and have a good evening. Thank you. All right, so we will now reconvene the open meeting at 10:00 PM. Secretary Boswell, do I have a motion to adjourn the meeting?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All right, having a motion by Secretary Boswell and a second by Trustee Quintana to adjourn, all those in favor, please raise your right hand. The motion passes unanimously. We are now adjourned at 10:00 PM. Thank you so much, and I know, happy holidays. Okay, welcome back. We are now back in open session at 7:35 PM. All right, so we were in executive session, and the trustees had a chance to talk about some of the agenda items under Section 11, Talent Strategy. So Secretary Boswell, do we have a motion?
Yes, I move to approve agenda items 11.1, proposed termination of professional employee during a term contract, 11.3, proposed suspension without pay of term contract employee pending termination, and 11.4, pursuing sanctions against educators who have abandoned their contract pursuant to TEC 21.105C, 21.210C, and 19 TAC 249.14.
Thank you. Do we have a second?
A second.
All right, with having a motion by Secretary Boswell and a second by Trustee Quintana, is there any discussion? Okay, all those in favor, please raise your right hand. The motion passes unanimously. Thank you. Okay, so now we're going to go back into exec session. Let me read all that. Okay, so we will open the... We'll recess the open meeting at 7:36 PM and move into exec session pursuant to Texas Government Code Sections 551.074, 551.072, 551.073, 551.087, 551.076, 551.0821, and 551.071. When we're finished with exec session, we'll briefly return to the open session to formally adjourn the meeting, so the adjournment will be recorded and included in all replays of tonight's evening, so thank you very much.
At what time did we go back to exec? 7:30?
All right, so we will now reconvene the open meeting at 10:00 PM. Secretary Boswell, do I have a motion to adjourn the meeting?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All right, having a motion by Secretary Boswell and a second by Trustee Quintana to adjourn, all those in favor, please raise your right hand. The motion passes unanimously. We are now adjourned at 10:00 PM. Thank you so much, and I know, happy holidays.